Not only the 2023 budget adoption meeting, but also the regular October council meeting. If you'd like to stand and join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the second time this year, it seemed like every minister that I spoke to was already pretty committed this morning for a long prayer. So if you just bow your head and join me in silent prayer, we really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. The first part of the meeting from 10 o'clock until 10:10 will be the budget adoption for the 2023 budget, and I will open up for any comments, thoughts, concerns, and I will start with Jackie. She brought us all some jukes, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Jackie.
After the new levy where she's reflected everything that has been done from your work sessions, I'm showing us adopting at 16,000 over levy, which is a good place to be. We will have, we are adopting with an estimated 5.6 million in county general's cash operating, 1.1 in Cune Bridge, 350,000 in health, 140 in planning, 479 in reassessment, and a million, 86,000 in CCD, a million two in highway, 700,000 in local road street, 285,000 in the PSAP at the end of 2023. These are the estimated amounts at the end of 2023.
And I will, I will add on what Jackie stated during the discussions, and I'll preface by saying that, you know, no budget is perfect. It just simply is. There's no way to do a perfect budget. We do the best we can. We, you know, we wrench our hands. Our hearts hurt sometimes, but we put together the best budget we possibly can for the benefit of the entire county. In stating the 5.6 million at the end of 2023 in county general, in having a discussion with Jackie, she told us that most financial advisors would like for your cash operating, general ledger cash operating balance to be between 15 and 20%.
No less than that.
No less than 15 to 20%. At 5.6, we're about 55-ish percent. So, you know, we're sitting in a very good position, and I think that the conservatism that this council puts forward is working quite well. Now, with that, also are what we consider quite a few unfunded liabilities. I was talking with a gentleman over this past weekend, and, you know, just this is perfect case in point. You know, that just bare bones trial is probably going to be a million dollars plus. You know, if there happens to be an appeal, you know, we could be looking at two to three million dollars. And, you know, even if it goes outside the county, it's still our responsibility to pay for that. We've got a jail that we're looking to build, potentially a new EMS garage somewhere south of Delphi. There's just a lot of things that, that we have to keep in the back of our minds as we move forward and, you know, make sure that we can provide some of those things going forward. So with that, I'll open it up to any of the council members and/or any of the people in the crowd that would like to comment. And I will add, last year we were able to give a 7% raise. We were able to do the same thing again this year. I don't want to say completely across the board, but I'm hopeful that we didn't give the full 7% because the individuals only requested about a 4% raise. But I think I personally would be hard pressed to try to find a county that did back-to-back 7% raises, you know, given the fears that we all had back in 1981 concerning the 2022, 23, when, you know, maybe the trailing effects of COVID would probably really get home. We've been fortunate. Things are, you know, pretty well back on track, and I feel quite comfortable with that. So, any comments?
I would like to say I'm very concerned about this budget for a couple of reasons. The primary reason is public safety salaries are not bumped enough, in my opinion. And as I watch news programs and things like that, I learn that one of the biggest fears is the constituents of our tax base are worried about, you know, defunding the cops, so to speak, and all that. And what's happening is, you know, we may well get a new jail built. We brought that up as a, as a future unfunded liability or expense that's coming up. But if we, if, you know, we're short three jailers, we're short two deputies, we're, we're not, you know, people are working tremendous amounts of overtime. And I get more phone calls from my constituents about the concern in the county over them not feeling safe. So to me, the number one job we have as a council sitting out there as well as the commissioners is that people feel safe in the county. And what I'm hearing, and honestly, I was thinking the other day, I'm glad I live in the city of Delphi because they are not, they don't have a shortage of deputies or officers, as far as I'm concerned. And, but the people in the county, you know, we cover clear from almost White County, you know, clear from the, from the Lakes to Burlington. I mean, it's, it's a large area, and we don't have enough, we don't have enough staff working, and it's going to be hard to hire more deputies. And I went to the Little Theater with the sheriff's debate, and I heard several people bring up that they wanted, they were asking how to raise taxes to get more deputies working, which we cannot raise taxes. There's a lot of people, you know, there we are, know that. But, you know, we've got, you know, as you said, 5.6 in the county general and 1.8 in the Cune Bridge. I mean, we've got, you know, we've got some, you know, we've been a very conservative county. At 55% cash operating, that's a very conservative county. I think everybody up here would sit here and agree with that. So for my money, it's a little too conservative. We're not taking care of our citizens in the fact of, of public safety and taking care of the elderly. I'm concerned about what, you know, the, the budget cut, you know, for this year and next year at Carroll Manor. I'm very concerned about that as well. There's a couple of, you know, courthouse staff that I don't think can be treated fairly. But I just wanted to put it on record. That's why I'm going to vote no to this budget because, you know, it's, it's, it's that big of a concern to me. I just want to make that clear.
Do you approve the budget as presented?
I've got a motion to approve the budget as presented. And I've got a second. We've got a motion and a second, and any kind of input?
Scott, I'd just like to say one thing. As far as EMS personnel, kind of.
Can we get out to the mic?
Oh, sorry.
I just want to say one thing. Just keep in the back of your mind about, and I know nobody wants to increase taxes. I know I presented about that EMS tax that can go help, help with EMS. Just keep in the back of your mind, it is getting very, very hard to bring people into, number one, the profession itself. But then usually we used to have a line of people I could call and say, hey, we've got an opening. They'd jump around me, and that's not happening at all. So people are getting paid more and more and more and more and more. We're finding, I mean, we've got a rate. I get that. That's great. Two years through, it's great. But just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. At some point in time, I think we're going to have to do something to, to raise the revenue coming in to help pay our, our people. So, that's all.
And I, I think in general, it's completely across the board. It's not, it does, it's not limited to counties. We see the issues in the private sector. We see them everywhere. People just simply, I, I think it's a societal problem. They just simply don't want to come to work, or, you know, they put in an application, get hired, and show up two or three days, and then they're, you know, they don't show up. And I, you know, I think it is completely across the board, and it is an issue. It's a problem with, with all employers across, across the spectrum. So, anyone else?
Is there a way to change the tax? I think that Carroll County.
Can we get to the mic? I'm sorry.
I think that Carroll County is the only county that still has a tax cap on. No state of Indiana?
No, every county has a maximum levy.
Okay.
Every county.
But ours is pretty.
Well, you're, we have, you have a frozen levy, but you gain that in income tax. Our levy growth grows in the income tax portion that we put into the, that we require to put into the budget, where other counties, it grows on property taxes. So when it grows on income tax, it grows on everyone with income. When it grows on property taxes, it only grows on those who own property. So we get the levy growth just like everybody else. It's just it's done in income taxes, not property taxes.
Okay. So that's the issue because we just, we have a small cap?
No, it's not the issue. It's funded. We get our 5% increase. I mean, it's, it's there.
Is there a way to make it more?
No, the, the maximum amount is set by the state.
Okay.
I mean, if we get the levy, we take the levy growth every year.
Okay. So I just wanted to make that clear because it's like, if there's a way to do it.
That is confusing. We're, I don't know that we're the only one left that's still frozen, but it doesn't matter if you're frozen or not frozen. You still get your levy growth. It's just Carroll County gets their levy growth in income taxes. And when, if you would unfreeze that, at some point in time, you would start getting circuit breaker losses over here in property taxes. I have a small county, Crawford County in southern Indiana, who loses a half a million dollars in circuit breaker loss out of their, their levy because of their tax rates. So.
Plus the effect on the school.
Plus the effect on the school. I mean, and the schools are losing that circuit breaker too. But just that one county general fund, and a county who is about the same size, maybe smaller, they're losing a half a million dollars of what they can collect. This county isn't doing that. So by keeping the levy frozen like we do and growing it in income taxes, we're able to sustain those circuit breaker losses, and they're very minimal here.
Well, thank you, because I think that's important for people in this meeting to know, and then the community to also know, that's why. So thank you for that.
Now you see what we have. Jackie, come in and advise us.
And also too, we discussed the tax that not this conference talked to. Do you want to, you want to explain why we did not choose to do that?
Well, I mean, there, I mean, there's several applications of that. I mean, a tax increase, I don't think, I definitely don't have an appetite for, but I mean, I don't think the body had an appetite for either. Would just be additional tax on every single resident in the county. I don't think there was an appetite for that. There is another way that it could be done, or we would decrease our lip rate and increase, and then levy, the public safety tax. The net effect of that would be, it would take money from all of the, what do you call them, qualified or certified chair, which is municipalities, schools, and everybody else. And so those folks would see a decreased revenue stream because we have decreased the county lip tax. So there was, you know, that was, that was also put on the table, but not voted on by, by the body in favor of it just because we don't want to decrease the revenue streams.
So it was discussed, didn't it?
I just want to say one thing about Carroll Manor real fast, and I feel like, just like normal with the transfer station, she doesn't have the right pieces to succeed out there, in my opinion. The transfer station, for years and years and years, it wasn't making a dime. It was losing money every year. And then last year, we as a council, we gave her the scale out there. And ever since then, she's been making money. We can, we can see that now and track that and everything. Out at Carroll Manor, we don't advertise for, I mean, if you're walking down the street and you talk to someone on the sidewalk, and you say, what do you know about Carroll Manor? No one knows anything. And I've talked to numerous, I, I talked to two photographers, not numerous, two photographers, about going out there and taking pictures of Carroll Manor. I also talked to Channel 18 about coming out and filming a commercial out there, while that would be on my dime and everything like that. I just want to see her succeed out there. And I feel like, as, for me in a business, having an employee that you see has their heart and soul into this, is everything you could possibly ask for. You know, when she was standing up here and presenting to us, her heart's in this place. It's always been in this place. Her mom was in charge of Carroll Manor. Her grandma was in charge of Carroll Manor. I mean, it just, the history is there for her. She wants to see it succeed. And I feel as a county, she's exactly the person we need out there, is someone that truly cares. We get someone else in there, they're not going to, they're not going to care about it like she cares about it. They're not going to put the effort in like she cares about it, especially for what, you know, what she's being paid out there to do it as well. So I just think, as a county, we need to invest in the resources to make her succeed.
And I, this was one of the subjects that took us an awful long time to try to work through. And I think the comment is that it's almost like Carroll Manor is in this perfect storm. There are more options available for people to stay in their home longer, with home healthcare. Folks, older folks do like to stay in their own home. And with, with the options available, they tend to do that up until the point until they're ready for a nursing home. You know, Carroll Manor supplied a product that was in between being at home and having to be in a nursing home. And with, you know, the societal shift with products and resources available for these folks to stay home longer in their own home before having to go to a nursing home has kind of put, put the crutch on the need and the demand for a place such as Carroll Manor. Now, it's an absolutely gorgeous facility. There's not a single person that would argue that point at all. And then, you know, back in 19, in the 19, early 20s, we had COVID. And, you know, they were one of the very, very few places that had zero COVID cases. And, you know, but with that, if you squelch and, you know, brought to a screaming hall, the number of people are just allowing anybody new additions to the, the home. And, you know, we are now on the backside of that, hopefully. But, you know, it is kind of that perfect storm of where we are and where we want to be. And like I stated during the discussion, that was one of the lengthy, lengthy discussions we had on trying to get, I don't know if I'd call it breathing, but, you know, trying to get some time to build up the census out there. I think, you know, there's, everyone around this table would love to see 35, 40 people out there. We really would. But it's a difficult decision. Like I said, a lot of, a lot of hand-wrenching and thoughts and hairs about some of the things that we, we discuss over those four, almost five days that we talk about budgets. So, yes.
Yeah, I would like to discuss the Carroll Manor issue, and thank you, Ethan, for some of the decisions or some of the ideas you had. I would like to know why there's not been some investment into the promotion like Ethan was talking about, considering that IPC 30 years ago committed $400,000 to the care and maintenance of Carroll Manor. In 30 years, at a low investment, that kitty has certainly contributed greatly to the general fund of Carroll County. I mean, if you do the basic math, it's doubled that, and that many has gone to support the county. Someone brought up COVID. COVID funds were available everywhere in Carroll County and across the country to support businesses and keep people employed and to keep the country going. I don't think any funds were committed to Carroll Manor during COVID or since then to support them and to help them get out of that bubble they're in because of COVID. And I would also like to know, what are the practical implications of these budget cuts in '22 and '23? I mean, there are at least 15 very elderly people out there. What are these budget implications doing to those folks and their families? I mean, these are real people. Carroll Manor's been there since 1853, and you're right, Martha is very committed to the group of people out there. I don't think you can find anyone else that's more committed. My name is Ed Keller.
If I can try to explain, when, when the council was budgeting, they take the revenue. They have to take the revenue that comes in for the Manor, and they can only budget up to that revenue that comes in. They did do some creative things, and they're not going to be short out there. It's just moved in different places.
Right.
Because, so they're not short, but that fund only has X number of dollars coming into it right now. And so they can only budget to that dollar amount because it's against the law to let a fund go in the red when it's not a reimbursable grant. And it's, so that's what they did, and they did some creative things with moving it to another place to ensure that there would be enough throughout at Carroll Manor. And I think the promotion part of it that you were talking about is a commissioner issue because they set policy and they actually oversee it. This body just funds the needs out there. The commissioners are the ones that oversee and do the policies and what they do.
Sure. And a bit of a night as a county, if we all work together as a group to promote something that is front and center on the Carroll County website. It should be a point of pride that we care about elderly.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just kind of.
And I understand that, and I'm not being hostile. I'm just very loyal. My aunt was out there for seven years. I've written $150,000 in checks, full pay to the county. And I know the level of care and effort that goes into maintaining that place. And I'll repeat my question. What's going to happen to the folks that are out there? What are the practical implications to a budget cut? The budget cuts that are.
The budget has not been cut. It will operate. The budget wasn't cut, it will operate.
Well, I, and forgive me, I don't know the technicalities. I'm seeing a position cut along with, you know, the.
I'll let you press into it.
Along with the benefits that accompany that, and I know for sure that the food budget's been halved. And I will sit down and follow any answers.
Is that the position was, amount was cut so they could stay below, it was a help to the. Additional can be done in January for that. The food budget was, she could take it out for donation to, again, to help the budget. It was also recommended by Josh that we take $10,000 from our health insurance fund and put it back into the Carroll Manor, which would help her. So it's not like they're trying to take things away. It, it's going to work if we do it properly. She wasn't told all that. The department head meeting didn't, she wasn't able to do that because she had something going on. But her rep or whoever should have gone out and told her all this stuff. But she didn't, she wasn't informed. So she has been informed now. She doesn't understand it because of the way we're kind of doing it. It's, it's a hard thing to see that you're, you're taking something away, and then you can get it back next year, and.
We're doing everything we can to keep the Manor open. The, the stark reality is that their, their revenue is half worked off.
So that's why we're trying.
So we're doing everything that we can to keep it going.
And when you brought up COVID, she had more people out there during COVID. They were wonderful about keeping COVID out of the Carroll Manor, because she had more than she has now. And so everything's been, I mean, there's no negativity towards the Carroll Manor. She has a lot of people backing her.
And specifically to your point, that we have $400,000 every year, every year. We have said, what do you need to renovate, to do whatever. She's never been denied anything to renovate that. Any request that she has made has been appropriated. So, like, she has been given everything that she has. In, in terms of the physical operator, this physical building of Carroll.
Well, I do think that there are separate issues that probably go back to the commissioners versus this. If we could get to the mic, if you're going to have comments for the record. I'm done.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I'm, Doug, for all this morning, it is pretty much common knowledge in the county that the council in the past has been against Carroll Manor. And that is very common knowledge all over the county. People that you talk to, we hear, oh, you're trying to close Carroll Manor. That does not encourage people to come to Carroll Manor, put their people there when they hear, well, we're going to have to leave them out here a few months. So I guess what I would like is for the council, if they could, to give affirmation to the fact that they want to keep Carroll Manor open and that they are seeking residents for it. And I think if that could be made public, I think it would go a long ways towards getting more residents into the Manor. And I, I know that Martha's, that child hasn't been the best. I know she's getting tired. I know she's discouraged, but she has done an excellent, excellent job at Carroll Manor. And I think she's ready to step down, but I think she wants to be sure that she has someone that will take over, that is, is dedicated to Carroll Manor and to the residents. So I would just ask for that affirmation from the council, because that could be made public.
Certainly. And I, I completely agree. Councillors of the past have not been, I don't want to say fair, but they have not treated Carroll Manor as this council does. I think everyone on this council field is the same way. Josh reiterated that, you know, we're doing all that we can, albeit creativity that is involved in, in trying to move forward with this. But yes, this council is completely behind the Carroll Manor.
Scott, I think I'd say certainly have to. I've had several phone calls from staff at the Carroll Manor and the public saying, why are we closing Carroll Manor? And I said, I've never heard that in a meeting at all, that they say that they've heard it through people. And that's the problem. I mean, people are saying stuff that is not true.
This, I've been here for six years.
I, I, I literally, this, this council, I have never heard anyone say that they want to close the Manor, ever.
I feel we strongly support it.
I feel we strongly support this.
But I do like your idea, and I do like Ethan's idea. You're right, this is a community home out there. So our community needs to step up while the Manor's down. And maybe we need to, you know, do something to help that Manor. But as like what Josh said, we have not been asked, and I know she's come in a couple of times and she said that she can't do it. But that is the department head's job, is to run that facility.
And I certainly understand that. I, I, I think it's a lack of, um, Carroll County is a county full of churches, and the churches support Carroll Manor, but they do it quietly. And the word's not out there. We really, there's no one, there aren't bodies available to create a Facebook page or to go out and discuss with the pastors, go out on a, a Sunday morning and talk about Carroll Manor and still being viable and a little bit of the history and, um, what it can do for you. You know, a lot of folks who either have their loved one five miles from home versus being in Logan's Fort or Lafayette or Monticello. Um, it truly is a facility for folks that aren't quite ready for full assist. But, um, having been around there, I can tell you the churches support it unilaterally. And that kind of unity is pretty rare anymore. But, um, we have nothing but acclamations from the churches and the, the word needs to get out to those churches. And I hope that some way that can happen. I mean, let's see a little bit of that, if Martha asks for it, some of that four hundred thousand go toward some kind of PR, making people aware, COVID is over, um, make it grow or at least make it attempt to, just don't let it die on the vine.
And I, um, spoke with Valerie Greske, and she was planning herself to go out to some of the social workers at the hospitals, maybe stopping with the VA, um, you know, those types of things. So, yeah, I think, um, we get the community involved, moving, moving this forward. Even on an individual basis, I think we have the great track.
And I agree with that individual basis, and this needs to be a grassroots effort. I, I mean, everybody has a different story about their elderly and their loved ones. And lot, hundreds, if not thousands, of people have been housed at Carroll Manor since its inception, and its purpose has changed greatly. I mean, there was a lot of stigma for years and years about it being the poor farm and embarrassment. And given Carroll County's traditional conservative roots, that runs deep. But it's no longer the, the poor farm. I mean, my aunt paid full rack rate, and as do many of the people out there. So, um, there's a lot of misconceptions, and I, I, I think that some promotion needs to happen. I mean, you look around at how Delphi has changed in the last ten or fifteen years as far as the streetscape. That happened because of promotion. I mean, why can't Carroll Manor be promoted in a similar way to the town of Delphi?
When you speak about where fun is, is right now, you know, you're saying that it's not being promoted, but the minute somebody would say Carroll Manor's struggling and they're gonna probably have to close it, which is not happening. You will see people rally, you will see people promote, you will see people fundraise.
And that's exactly.
So why is that not happening now?
This is not, we've been saying it for five years.
Yeah, why is this not happening now? Why does it take the negativity of shutting something down and defunding it for people to stand up and rally and help?
Um, I would say COVID for the last two or three years. And I would say that Martha's been without an assistant for two or three years. It's because of the census staffing is down and there's not people.
But when she had that assistant, it did not happen.
That was over three years ago. Times change. COVID's kind, fresh ideas are always welcome. Something that three years ago might as well be thirty years ago in today's day and age. Instead of talking about something that didn't happen three years ago, let's talk about something that can happen now.
It's, it's there, and I've stated for the thirty-third time today. Anything she's asked for, she received. This council has never, ever threatened to take money away from her. The only thing we're trying to do is keep it open. And fortunately, unfortunately, someone has to run it. And so decisions have to be made at the management level. So, uh, this body has been a forum, we have given her everything she asked for. And I don't, I don't know what else that we can do as a body to be supported. But we, we, it is not our job to run it. We've had multiple departments that tell us to get out of their business. And I would say Martha is amongst those that doesn't want this body to micromanage it. So we, um, give support to those org, to those departments, but we cannot run that. So that's my thoughts.
Hi, um, I'm Jamie Smith. I'm, and I used to be in the way at Carroll Manor for over ten years off and on. And my mom, Diane Brown, worked out there as Martha's assistant for over thirty years. I know that Martha's been getting tired and she's doing that job all by herself for the last two or three years since my mom left. So she's not able to, if she has to work shifts because of low staff and all that, she doesn't have the time to do everything that's needed to be done and still have a life or be able to go home in the evenings. But I know in January, they can come back for appropriations or for the adjustment. But if that assistant position is cut, nobody, it doesn't matter if Martha was in there, if, you know, anybody was in there, they are not going to be able to run that place on its own and get the staff up. I've been there when that place had thirty residents out. You know, we had full staff and we had two office workers and it was just better. And people liked living out there, people liked working out there. But she, Martha just doesn't have the help right now, just like most places, they don't have staff. My question is, if that position is cut, how are they supposed to do anything to, you know, Martha can't do alone, especially if she has health concerns and they have the bare minimum staff. So that position being cut, I don't feel like that's gonna help anything. I don't know if there's somewhere else in her budget. I wasn't here, I didn't hear about her budget thing. I think she can deal with the food probably, you know, find ways to cut corners there. But that assistant position is vital to keeping Carroll Manor running. It could not be done by one person. I was out there when Nada ran it. I, I was younger, but I remember when Nada ran it, and she always had Martha. And I think Martha's done a great job, but she's just, it's worn on her the last few years doing it by itself. And I, I also wanted to know about the, the Packers money. Is it earmarked just maintenance in the form of census help? Or the, I know that she has to pour him down for, you know, money, but what are the words?
It's maintenance.
It's, does it?
Capital run.
Capital, okay.
Repair and maintenance.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
And I will say, that's still in County General, and we've asked several times to maybe get it out there and put it in its own fund, like the ordinance used to say.
Correct.
You remember that?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussions?
I would like to ask for one more consideration for the twenty-six, twenty-nine for my office staff. I've visited for the last three years. If I didn't feel so strongly about it, I wouldn't be up here. I, I appreciate the seven percent two years ago, so does everybody. But last time we was in here, I did a lot of numbers between offices. And we know we're not a, a elected office. But in twenty years, ten years, when those positions are vacant, we mentioned last month, trying to get those where they need to be. I feel that twenty-six, twenty-nine would help us a bunch to where if new staff came in, it'd be a more presentable salary. So I'm just asking, sorry, again, for that, for the office member, sorry, I didn't say it last couple of times. Thank you.
Anything? Anyone else? All right, I have a motion and a second on the board for adoption of the twenty-twenty-three budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say a sign. No. And motion passes forty-two.
Do we need a motion to end budget option session? So.
Second.
Aye.
Those in favor to end the adoption motion or adoption meeting? Say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Okay, there is. Okay, and now we'll move into our regular October meeting. Uh, in front of you is the consent agenda, are there any items that everyone wishes to perform with the consent agenda? Herein then, I will, um.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve consent as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Looking good. And that will. Yeah, Josh and Paul. Okay, and that will bring us down to the review of financial reports. Real quickly, at the end of September, um, we should be at seventy-five percent of the annual budget. As I glance through, um, the comparables, most everyone is in that seventy-five percent or less on their budget utilization. Right now in County General, we've got six point five million in edit funds. We've got just a click over one million. Rainy day, three point five million. Riverboat, three hundred and fifty thousand. In our correctional facility fund that gets income every month from our lit, we currently have three point six five million. And jail, um, capital project, we've got one million. My departments that I work with, prosecutors, seventy-one percent. Commissioners are sixty-seven percent, council sixty-three. EMS at seventy-three, and 4D is at seventy-three as well. Mr. Iden?
The departments I work with are clerk at seventy-one percent, soil and water at sixty-seven percent, the coroner at forty-six percent, the transfer station at fifty-eight percent, and the manor at sixty-two percent.
My departments are fine?
Mine are okay. I do need to, I'm a dull work task, I understand their budget just a little better.
My department's are fine?
I mean, these assets are a lot, but reporters are eighty-three percent. That's because she pays for half of her, uh, first deputy out of her line and a half out of the recorder's perpetuations. She's the only one that's up there.
Okay, and move over to the audits of the report, Beth?
I have a change of preference that was overlooked. And it's, it's a school board, whatever you care. But we had it already, um, budgeted from last year. And we do have a maintenance contract, but custodian did not realize he needed to encumber. I didn't think about it, so it was something that was overlooked, and I would like to have this encumbrance approved so we can move on and get heat in this building.
How'd you do this?
It's four, um, it's on your.
That's not on.
It's not on your agenda. It's forty-seven thousand one hundred is the balance in that fund.
So are you saying you're encumbering this for twenty-twenty-one fund, for the twenty-twenty-one budget? And the purchase order is all right there?
And we spent, um, fifty-seven thousand. But what is left that isn't in the fund, it was forty-seven one hundred. He's got a bill in and that's how we kind of figured it out that it wasn't encumbered. It's because it's like a bill for six thousand and something that needs to be paid. And so we'd like to get it in the fund at that sound. And this is not a, that a fund that the DLGF would probably just wobble about. They will not make the actions.